Meeting called order. Today is Tuesday, December 6th. It is now 7:10 PM. Town Council Meeting in Town Council Chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. John Lee, lead us in prayer.
Please stand, bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening as your humble servants. We ask that you watch over these proceedings and bless us with your divine guidance and your unparalleled wisdom. Help this council to always engage in meaningful discussion and remind us to be thoughtful and compassionate in our decisions, as our choices affect the lives and the well-being of others. Please bless the grace town of West Warwick and the good citizens who live in it. We pray this in your name, amen.
Hey, Joseph and Patrick Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the fiscal, without the need to judge justice or honor.
Before we go into roll call, this is 60 percent new council, so I know she'll be doing a roll call, but I'd like to introduce, this is Jay Lichardi, he's the councilman for Ward 4. Jay Messier, councilman for Ward 3. John D'Amico is Ward 5. Those are your three new council members, and congratulations on your win, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, man.
Councilman Lichardi?
Yeah.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Yeah.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a form. Civil Air Patrol.
Hold on one second.
I move that the minutes of the December 6th, 2016 executive session be kept closed in accordance with Rhode Island general laws 42-46-4 and 42-46-5A2.
Second.
Move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Civil Air Patrol 75th Anniversary Proclamation.
Where'd the proclamation go? This is just a proclamation that the town manager sent over. I'm not going to read it, we're just going to mail it off to the group, they would like our support. This is just basically saying, "Civil Air Patrol was founded December 1st, 1941, to supplement the US military during World War II." And Fred, to be exact, what were they looking for with this approval, with this proclamation?
The 75 years.
The 75 years, and that's all this is here tonight, so, thank you.
Minutes of the previous meeting? Resolved that the minutes of the November 15th, 2016 Town Council Meeting are hereby accepted.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent Agenda, License Applications, resolved that the Consent Agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation is the same as hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys, I'm going to, I need you to say aye, or I'm going to start doing roll call votes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Those licenses that have approved, the St. Anthony's Church for Bazaar, Tag Day Permit for J.C.'s, and Ed Lit, and Lit Foundation, our business license, Sean Thornton doing business as FX Painting, Anna Gill doing business as Areola, Five Star Cleaning Service, KDA Fitness, Academy Express, The Academy for Little Children, CLC Cleaning Services, Universal Properties for Victual Housing License, Pizza Pros, DBA Subway, Azos Pizza 2, Donny U's Pizza, Dunkin' Donuts on Providence Street, West Warwick Avenue Dunkin' Donuts, Colby Enterprises, how many are on here, West Warwick Shell, Butchkey's Instructional Retreational Club, Max Bowaway, and that is it. They've all been approved. I just wanted to make sure we're going into the hundreds.
Consent Agenda Correspondence, resolved that the Consent Agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation is the same as hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, discussion? For the new council members, this is where you would see letters from individuals or any type of correspondence from like National Grid, Verizon, Cox, or any business, or anybody looking for reappointments, or anything like that, so any correspondence letter that somebody sent into the council. Any public comment? Any comment from the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Cancellation of Taxes, resolved that the attached cancellation of taxes in the amount of $4,072.75 in accordance with Title 44-7-14, as authorized by the tax collector of the town of West Warwick and presented for approval of the town, for the approval of the Town Council, is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the office of the tax collector.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Cancellation of Taxes, Tax Assessor, resolved that the attached cancellations in the amount of $7,410.04 presented to the tax assessor for approval of the Town Council in accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances, is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the office of the tax assessor.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion?
Yes. Again, I see businesses here, I see people here that went bankrupt, and we're on the hook for their taxes. Again, they are still conducting business, they are still in town, they still have trucks. Again, how can they be?
I think that's the first one you saw, not the second.
Right, well, I just, same thing. How, again, I asked a solicitor this, how can they be conducting business and not paying their fair share of taxes like everyone else, every other business, every other homeowner, and they continue to beat the system and get away with, without paying their tangibles or whatever taxes they have? I just don't understand it.
Well, councilman, again, the issue, whether or not they follow the Chapter 7, or Chapter 11, or Chapter 13, is not apparent from this document, but normally, the bankruptcy taxes are going to be omitted because they went through the bankruptcy process. If in fact, they're still conducting business, it's a different issue, because I don't know what name they're conducting business under. So, without a thorough investigation, I can't tell you.
Rose?
Yes.
Just state your name for the record.
Rose Silva, tax collector. You're going to see where the bankruptcies that were listed are from Rossi Law, which is our new debt collection service, and in the past, we would receive, we would record bankruptcies, and when we received the paperwork in the mail, it was from the courts, and what the courts would do would, you know, they'd list us as a creditor, all right? In our old debt collection company, they would never, we would never know with the old debt collection company, so basically Rossi Law is our new one, and they give us on a monthly basis, all companies that are, that are bankrupt, and they have to follow state law. So, they will not go after their taxes. So, basically, a lot of these are old, and we're basically cleaning up a lot of old stuff, and you're going to see that there's some from 2007.
But Rose, they still, do they understand that they are still conducting business in the town of West Warwick?
As far as I know, no. I don't know that, because I don't see that part of it.
Well, this is an investigation for a particular vehicle, let's say it was under ABC Corporation, and they went bankrupt, and now it's XYZ. Wouldn't know that without the benefit of an investigation.
Well, that's, that's what Rossi's law firm is getting paid to do. I mean, not just write it off because he can't collect it. I mean, there's a lot of money we're forgetting about.
These are mostly motor vehicles I'm looking at.
No, I know, it's just, I brought, I've been bringing this up now, what, about a year now, two years, and, you know, there's some 7,000, 8,000, 10,000, this, it, I just brought it up because I keep seeing bankrupt, and whether it's $100 or $300, but there was some 10,000, there was some 20,000, there was some 15,000. I mean, as, as you all know, you're going to find out, budget time, we're looking for thousands, for a thousand dollars, and here, we're writing off hundreds of thousands of dollars, where all the rest of the good people in this town and businesses are paying their fair share, and because of a little loophole, that they're getting away with it, or of a law firm that's not going after it because it's harder for him to collect, and he might have to spend three hours to collect 100, where he can spend three minutes and collect 10,000. So, that's all I keep bringing up, and it's nothing to do with you, Rose, I understand that, you're limited to what you can do. It has nothing to do with our office. It's, has to do with the law office that handles this, and is, is not doing their due diligence because he might have to use 10 man hours to get 300, where he's not going to pay attention to that, but if he can use 10 man hours to collect 300,000, he's going to do it. And if you add up the hundred dollar bills compared to the $30,000 bills, that outnumbers the big dollars.
Sure, go ahead.
And just, just for the record before.
And I just can't get a straight answer, and, and I know you can't give it to me.
I have, I have a law here, that's, it's a state law from Rossi stating that they can't go after people that are bankrupt.
And just, just to clarify, this agenda item that we're voting on now, he's actually speaking on the agenda item before this?
Yeah.
Because the next one, these are all appeal decisions?
Right, yeah.
And they were all done by the tax assessor office?
Right, I have nothing to do with this, I just brought it up because it's still on cancellations of taxes.
And you're going to see more and more.
But most of these names are individuals, so if they're operating a business right now, it's unclear as to whether or not that vehicle is a business vehicle or a.
No, but like I'm saying, Timmy, this opened the door for me to have discussion on it, because as I asked before, there was, there was businesses with 7,000, 5,000, 10,000, and whether it's 100 or not, I can discuss it now.
Yeah, but, but Angelo, for instance, in, I've never gone through the bankruptcy process, but I've known people who have, and the, I can, if I close down Dave Goslin Construction, and it's bankrupt, doesn't mean I can't go open up DJ Goslin Construction under the same doing business. So, yeah, I'm doing business in town, but I bankrupt that business, I wiped that business out, I started a new one.
But when you got, when you got the same offices and the same trucks and the same names.
I'm the same guy.
Without a thorough investigation, you don't know what the entity is.
All right, I get the same, and I know none of you can answer me, I get the same rigmarole all, all the while, that I keep asking this, and again, we're losing money, there's, I like to talk to that law firm.
That's what I was just going to recommend.
You know what I'm saying, because I'll pinpoint where there's some businesses, none of us have the authority to go after it, I understand that, but it's just that, we're paying a firm, we're paying a company to do this for us, and to have the answers for us, and we're just, I'm not getting the answers that I want to hear.
Last firm we had.
Because you know what, Angelo Padula &amp; Son Inc. is going to close down tomorrow, owing $100,000 in taxes, and I'm going to open up Francis Padula Inc.
And it happens all the time.
I mean, you know, I mean, there's got to be some kind of protection, because if I don't pay my taxes, you, in my business, you're going to attach my property, you're going to attach my assets, you're going to, you're going to attach my pay. This is what I don't understand, people are riding $20,000, $30,000, and they're just going away clear. And I know, I know, Rosie, I know, believe me.
What, what I can do is.
And it's frustrating for me, when I got to pay, and every month I pay, you know, the state of Rhode Island, everybody thinks, you know, I ride a dealer plate, I'm screwing the taxpayers, you know, I have seven cars registered, but my dealer plates, I generate $100,000 every six months for the state of Rhode Island, with them dealer plates. So, you know, people that don't understand business, don't understand what dealer plates are, don't understand what the tax base is, should really do their investigating, if they want to complain, let's get on the same page and complain about the people that are really taking us for a ride.
No, I, I agree, I just.
What I was going to suggest was that Rose and I can meet with Rossi, express your concerns about the bankruptcies, and see what else they might be able to do.
I just want an answer, John.
Right.
I mean, you know, I've been going through this for two years, and I, and I haven't got an answer when it comes to my attention, when I see two or four businesses that move from their building down the street.
Angelo, I know you're passionate about it, but I think Rose has the law in front of her saying that that law firm can't go after somebody who's bankrupt.
But there's going to be some kind of technicality why they can't go after them.
We'll get the answers for that.
Maybe they're not saying.
We'll discuss it with Rossi.
He's, he's running another business, I mean, that doesn't say you can run another business with the same names on your, on your vehicles.
Hey, our president has had numerous bankruptcies, and, and he's now president, and now he's giving his businesses to his parents.
Yeah, but you know what, I like to be bankrupt like him, own a 700 car range, bankrupt a den.
But I could own a home run.
Angelo, the only thing the town could do, when receive the initial notice of a bankruptcy filing, is basically challenge it, indicating that the applicant may be committing fraud.
Yeah, but we don't know that while they're going bankrupt, Timmy, but it's after the bankruptcy.
No, but what I'm trying to get at is, that's why there's a continuing investigation. You don't know whether or not, for example, under the, the Malio, all right, there were two, there's two, 2006, 2007. First off, you don't even know if the car's still in existence, you don't know if the Malio's still in existence, you don't know any about this stuff. So, if you were going to ask if he's conducting a business using this particular vehicle, there'd have to be a process by which you would investigate. And the question always is cost benefit, how much do you want to utilize, because an attorney that investigates this is not going to take tax sales at a percentage, they're going to want to get paid for the investigation.
But didn't he take tax sales under a percentage?
Not this company.
No, this is not the tax, this is, this is the tax collection.
This is the Rossi Law.
So, how are we paying them?
By what they collect.
It's a percentage of what they collect.
Of what they collect.
What they collect, they get a percentage.
But some accounts are un, some accounts are uncollected.
So, this money is uncollectible for them also, they, they get a percentage.
They're not going to collect off of this, they can't.
I don't see how they would waste their time on a hundred dollar bill.
Their incentive, their incentive to collect on this is their, you know, their, what their actual cost is.
You know, I, I can keep arguing about this all night, and we don't have the answers, but I would like, I would like to get some answers.
We'll meet with Rossi, we'll have the conversation, and if, if it warrants, you know, them to come in to actually address your concerns, we can, we can possibly do that as well.
That's all, just get some answers.
Okay.
I know, I know we can't answer it, I know we have no control over it.
Okay, we'll get some answers, and like I said, we can even potentially have them come in and, you know, talk with you directly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
National Grid Petition for Juniper Drive, petition of the National Grid covering the installation of underground facilities for Juniper Drive pole boxes, resolved that the Town Council hereby approves a proposal from National Grid to locate and maintain poles, wires, and fixtures protecting, including the necessary sustained and protecting fixtures and underground facilities for Juniper Drive pole boxes.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, discussion?
This is your ward, this is.
It is.
You can actually click on it.
Yeah, yeah. So, I might just have some questions regarding this. So, what is it, their exact petition, do they want to be able to just get into the boxes because everything's essentially underground?
Anytime they do work on their lines, if they have to run new lines or put in new equipment, they need to get permission from the council.
Okay.
And, and the council has to sign off on it, because they're technically in our right of way on the, on the street.
Is it underground or?
Not only, not only that, underground, not only that, like I have problems in Tanglewood, they have access to people's properties, and when they dig up their wires, they sometimes forget to go fix the property the way that they found it, so.
All the wires that they dug up?
Right, so, you know, I mean, this is a concern to whatever ward this is, because.
Got to stay up on it, so.
You got to stay up wherever they're doing it, you know, you have to let the people know, or, because they will make a mess of the yard and, and leave it the way it is, and they have no right to do that.
But if we call them, they'll go back and they'll generally clean up.
And I'll tell you, beginning, it says right here.
When is this happening, did he give us a date? I don't have it in front of me.
Well, they, they applied for this on 10/26, but.
Basically, at this point, they'll, they need permission, then they'll put it in the queue for the work order, and then they'll notify.
It could be, it could be now, it could be.
Springtime.
Springtime, or next, the year after that, it all depends. It's just, once we approve it, you really don't get to know, unfortunately, when they, it's almost like National Grid, or the gas company, National Grid side of it, they, they petition for something, we approve it, and it could be anywhere between one week to six months, as long as we approve it. Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. My next suggestion is everybody drink a Red Bull before the council meeting from here on out.
Town Council Acting as a Liquor Commission. New Class B Limited Liquor License for Fu Ming Restaurant, resolved with the following application for a new Class B Limited Liquor License, having been advertised in accordance with laws. For hearing on this date, no monsters or objectors present, the same is hereby approved. Lu Ying Li Inc. Doing Business as Fu Ming Restaurant, 350 Providence Street.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll say.
Move in second, discussion?
Yeah.
Angelo?
Don't, where are they? Fu Ming.
She's here.
Don't you already have a liquor license there?
Oh, yeah, we forgot, we renewed last year, so we renewed it this year, so it's a new, but been, we have a liquor license for 20 years already, we just, I just forgot to renew it, so I had to.
That's what I'm saying, I said, I already know, I said, I come in there, and I know you got, I get beer and stuff, so how you serving without?
Yeah, I forgot last year, so.
All right, no, no problem.
It's renewed, it's going to get renewed. Any other questions? Everything's all set as far as taxes and all that, we have to ask that question. All caught up?
I believe it's all signed off, which is why it's a progress.
Okay. Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, you've been reapproved.
Keep that beer cold.
Okay.
Town Council Acting as Town Council Ordinance Number 2016-15, first reading sponsored by Council President Goslin, and ordinance amending Chapter 10, Licenses and Business Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the town of West Warwick, by adding thereto Article 13 Tobacco Dealers' Licenses and Sales Restrictions.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Move in second, discussion? Before we get started, just to give the council a brief history lesson, I want to, and I'm going to be off probably on my times, but I think about six months ago, a little group in the second row there called SAD, it's Students Against Destructive Decisions, came before the council, and they had a presentation here, it was about a 15 minute presentation. Well, they went about three months ago, a little deeper, where they had a little macaroni dinner, dessert, that they all did on their own, invited myself, Senator Satchel, who I don't think was present that night, Representative Serpa, parents of children, and obviously their parents were involved, teachers, Kimberly Maine and Judith Chick were really involved with these kids on this, and it was much, it was a more detailed presentation, about an hour, hour and a half, and what they did is, these kids went to local stores, and they got permission to go in, take pictures, and where their tobacco products are, and they also brought samples of these tobacco products, along with like Big League Chew or Bubble Gum, and compared, and how'd you smell both of them, and where chewing tobacco was the same as Big League Chew, the same smell.
They still make Big League Chew?
Yeah, they still make Big League Chew. So, hearing all that, I couldn't let it go unnoticed with the work they had done, and I, in the last meeting that I had with them, I told them I would work diligently with us, Solicitor and Al DiFiore on this, and see what we could come up with, and there was also, I want to, I know her name, but I, she's right there.
Ben Vinda.
Ben, Ben.
Ben Vinda.
Ben Vinda. She sent over some ordinances from other communities, and I then forwarded them to Al, who actually during the crisis down in Florida that he was having, I met up with him in an airport, in my travels, and he told me he's working on it, and when you're ready to load onto a plane, and somebody taps you on the shoulder, you're kind of like, who are you? And then, there's Al in the middle of the airport, I think it was in Atlanta, wasn't it?
No, it was right, it was here, you were going.
Oh, you were going, yeah, so, and he told me he's working on it, he emailed it off to the previous council, and then he, we emailed it to you guys last week. Major McGarrett actually can't put some concerns he had this week, so, I mean, there's still a lot of ironing out that we have to do, but this is the first reading, and, so Al?
To pick up from where Dave just left off of the background on this, once Dave contacted me, and I had been at the hearing with these students, and I fortunately was there that night and heard what they, they would come up, come up with, so when Dave called me and said that he wanted to do something about it, I knew what their goal was, and for the background of the council, what I did was I went to the ordinances of all the communities in the state of Rhode Island, and I went, went through them, and I pulled out the ordinances from all the communities that deal with tobacco sales. I copied them all, and then I kind of cherry picked through them to come up with what I thought would be one of the most comprehensive, taking from this on, the Warwick ordinance and the Coventry ordinance, this from Warwick, this from Coventry, and putting it all together, in what I felt was a pretty complete package, from the very, like, some of them have machine dispensers, others don't, and I put it together and sent it off to the council. I since have spoken with Dave and with John McGarrett, and a couple of the issues that I want to bring forward that have been raised, and tell you why they're in, were the draft that I sent to you. For example, there's a provision in the draft that says that if they don't, if the tobacco dealer doesn't get a license within the timeframe, there's a $250 penalty. That $250 is something I saw in other ordinances, and I put it in there as a starting point for the council. The council can say 100, the council can say 500, that was, I had to put something in, and that's where I came up with it. The next issue that was raised by John, and I personally think it's a very valid one, was a number of communities put the burden on the police department to inspect twice a year. As John pointed out, we have something like 31 tobacco dealers in the town, that means 62 times, he's got to find somebody to go inspect them. John suggested that they may inspect twice a year, or they may inspect, I think Dave mentioned that maybe an inspection at the time of the annual renewal, something that, I, I put it in because that's what communities had, I personally don't think that we should burden our police department with going to every tobacco dealer twice a year. The other thing that Dave raised in his email to me is the punishment clause. I was amazed that that punishment clause, which to me is wacko, was in a number of ordinances, that it's a, I think a $50 fine for the first offense.
It all depends on what town.
Another 50 for the second, another 50, then after the fourth offense, they get suspended for 30 days, and it takes six offenses before anything is really done. I mean, our, our police department could go on full time trying to enforce that, so again, I threw it out, put it in there for the council's thought on it, and the final issue that I felt was, in Dave's email back to me, he mentioned the, the fee for the registering of a tobacco dealer's license. That you can't do until you've approved some type of an ordinance, creating a dealer's, a tobacco dealer's license.
So, on, on, on his email that he sent over to you, there's two, there's the ordinance, and there was also set fees.
That came from John, not me.
That was going to be my question about what the fee, sorry, what the fee was going to be. Well, the fee is something that we can set, once the ordinance goes through, which could be on the next agenda, or the next agenda after that, because we still got some ironing out to do. Just, just for the record though, this isn't something new, as far as, is alcohol, is one thing that we, we, any bar or liquor license or anything like that, when they come before the council for a new liquor license, they get inspected, their, their establishment gets inspected, so on and so forth, and we make sure there's no violations, you know, serving minors and all that. I would just want the public to realize that this isn't some kind of cash grab, it's obviously something to regulate. It's, 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 basically, what, what this is really to do, because, I'll, I'll use Jerry's as an example, Jerry's supermarket, when you go in to buy any tobacco product, you have to go to their front counter, everything's up against the wall. One of the stores, I, I want to say is Breads and Stuff, or the Sam's Store over in my ward down near Horgan School, all the chewing tobacco is right next to the candy, all, all cigars, flavored cigars are right in children's grab, in children's reach. They, they, they market to, and I'm not saying they're selling to children, but when you, when a kid walks up to it and smells it, and it's grape, they, they could get attached to it. And hopefully, they're buying it, but you don't know, and like these, these kids point out to us, once somebody starts tasting that flavor, what's the tobacco industry done over many years? It's done it to our general, our parents and their parents. It's, once it becomes a habit, it's a habit, and it's a habit to, hard to break. So, these kids brought it to us and said, if we can stop habits at a young age and keep them away from it at a young age, that, you know, hopefully, in generations to pass, it'll continue. I know I don't smoke, and knock on wood, my kids don't smoke, and it, I think they're right. If, if, if they stay away from it now, they won't get tied up into it in the future. And unfortunately, tobacco industries have gone to that where it's flavors, and now they make everything good to, like, taste good, you know, it's, it's a little different. I know, i-if something tastes good, you're probably gonna try it more often, you know? So that's what I'm trying, that's what they're trying to prevent, and we're trying to prevent.
One more point on the ordinance that I've submitted before I talk, especially with the new councilman, about the fees. There was a provision in there, again, to me, it was a provision I pulled out, that says that if somebody doesn't look twenty-seven, they're gonna give them, I mean, that John raised, and that to me should just be, you gotta be eighteen and leave it up to them to enforce it. As to the fees, if I might take a minute with the council, the new councilman, what we did a couple of years ago was, fees were set by ordinance. That meant that every time the council wanted to change a fee, they had to have two readings and a whole process. We prepared an ordinance that gave, gave the council the authority to do it by resolution, which means that you, I present a resolution to you, it gets advertised, and then one night you pass it, you set the fee. The fee here, a regular business license is $100 for the application and $25 for the annual renewal. The fact of the matter, and Dave put it in his email to me, you can't have a fee for tobacco dealer's license until you have a tobacco dealer's license. So, the first step is, this ordinance has to be passed.
What are some typical fees in some other communities?
I, I didn't, I didn't go looking at them. I stuck with the fee schedule we have for various things. In your Code of Ordinances, Appendix B lists all the different fees that, that we have in the town. And I just said that, the, when that Code of, when that Appendix B was created, I can tell you, the council met a number of times, they instructed me to go to every department in the town and find every fee that every department charged. I submitted to the council. The council then reviewed every fee that was charged. We had things like a bingo was $2. Well, it costs more to do the paperwork than $2. So, two or three years ago, we revised that, and if you look in the, your Code of Ordinances, Appendix B, you'll see all the fees and get a feeling for what the council did. I'm not making the recommendation, I'm just telling you that a regular business license is $100, $25 for renewal.
So, so, I'm sorry to cut you off, Jay.
No, no.
Going back to what Al just said, we had a carnival license. We have one carnival, maybe two carnivals here every year, depending if some side ones come in. The carnival license was $5.
Yeah.
We, our building official, our electric, our fire marshal and our electrical inspector has to go down there and spend many hours a week down there. So, we went to, I think it was $100 or $250, whatever it may have been. You know, that's just to cover the labor of going down there. But if you look in your folder here, there's Cranston, they have a $155 per year fee, plus a $5 processing fee. Providence is a $100 a year fee. Richmond's $50 per year, plus an additional 25. So, again, if it's not about, it, it could not, I mean, we already have a business fee in town. It could be part of that fee already. It's just that now this enforces it. For instance, Richmond, if they go in and find that the tobacco's right next to the candy and not where it's supposed to be, first offense is $250, second offense was $500, third offense is $1,000. And then, it gets, it's just like alcohol here, sometimes they get shut down.
As far as the fines go, I agree with that. Make them heavy. You know, the fee, originally, everybody, I, I think it should be nominal, nominal amount.
Yeah, and, and again, that's, we already have a, we already have a business fee. It, it's a $100 initial, one time, and $25 each year after that. And if that's the fee you want, that's fine, we just go through with disinspections, and, you know, it's not adding any additional fee to the business. I'm not looking to add fees. I'm looking to enforce and get the tobacco away from.
I agree.
Where it's out of reach of children. So, I mean, like you said, I agree.
Just wanna be proactive with that, so people don't see this and go, oh, look, they're trying to add another fee to the businesses. No, I, I fully agree with you.
If, if I might make, make a suggestion on this particular thing, because it's so, so involved, rather than moving on to a second reading, I might suggest to the council that the council continue it for another first reading, and have each, any of the councilmen that have a particular suggestion, be it the fines, be it the, the number of inspections or whatever, and send me an email about it. That way, I can put together, you know, a revised.
Ordinance.
Ordinance for, and, and not, let's not get to second reading where we gotta go through the whole.
Yeah, we gotta go through another whole rhythm. Before, before I do that, I know some of the kids are here that were involved. Do you have anything you would like to say, or anything you'd like to see changed?
I, I will give them my, my email address, and they can also, I'll make sure that I send them a copy of the ordinance, any of them that want it, and they can contact me, and, you know, contact the councilman.
Yeah, as soon as you send it to me, Al, I sent it off to Judy Chick, and then she sent it off to the group. So, as soon as you get it to me, I can give it to them also. But if you have anything you'd like to say tonight, it'd be good to hear.
Just state your names for the record.
Hi, Thomas Cornselli.
I'm Zoe Moreau.
Bailey Diorio.
So, with us, we have actually brought letters from the Department of Health. I don't know if you have received these, but if you would like them.
I have not yet, but that'd be great.
So, I know in your packets, I believe you have the fees list, which really is a step in the right direction for West Warwick, I mean Rhode Island, and West Warwick, I believe, could follow in these towns and cities' footsteps. There have been eight, with One Socket recently being added, and these are just similar ordinances. We could have a better one. And another thing that I would like to state is that these other cities and towns, as well as California, that have had these similar ordinances, have not reported any negative setbacks with these. So, if it's not hurting them, why shouldn't we do it? If it's gonna protect our youth? I think that's pretty much it.
So, and again, this is to protect the youth and, you know, keep the tobacco away from them. Can I ask you a question? How many, how many stores does this affect? Because I know we talked about a lot of the, like Cumberland Farms is definitely behind there. How many in your?
Al, you said we had thirty-six tobacco.
John mentioned thirty-one, I think he said.
Thirty-one. But how, but how many are the thirty-one? Sorry.
Well. I'm not sure if it's back, but I don't need to ask when we've done federal state checks. It's probably around thirty-one.
Thirty-three, according to the students.
So we have thirty-three places that sell tobacco in town. Now, some are already in compliance. You know, Jerry's supermarket is already in compliance. Some may find, and some may find that they need to make some room somewhere, because they have a very small store. But, again, away from the candy, and they have a designated section.
Seems like an easy enough fix, though.
It's, it's, it is easy. I know, it's, they put it right next to the register, because it's one of those impulse items. I'll only grab this and go as an adult sometimes, but that's, we don't want it to be an impulse for any.
Absolutely.
If they need to ask for it, it's in the back. Going back to what you said, I know I, when I just visited Vegas for work, and I went into a smoke shop to perform an install, and all their tobacco products were up against the wall, and everybody had to ask for them. Everything was either in a case, and nobody could reach it, they had to go behind the case and open it. So, I, I saw exactly firsthand in, in Sun City, so it's kind of.
If they do it in Vegas, then, yeah. They don't keep much behind the glass capes in Vegas.
But, and again, these, these students spent, now, after we had our meeting, you went on and had more presentations after that night?
We presented to the school committee.
Yep.
And.
We are presenting to the, to a youth, youth-driven conference in January.
And, and my suggestion to the new council members is maybe get an invitation to that and check it out, because even though this might already pass, but once you see the presentation and the work and dedication that went into this with the children and the teachers, you'd be very impressed. And, and they went into each store, basically letting them know what they're working on, and, correct me if I'm wrong, they let you in to take pictures and do whatever.
Most of the time.
Yeah, most of the time, they were very opening.
Yeah. What was the response from some of the stores that don't have them separated?
Um, well, it was, it was very like, half and half, I wanna say. Like, some of them were like, oh, please come and like, take pictures. And then the other half was like, very like shady, and like, I wanna say scared in a way. Yeah, they were like.
They're waiting to see it on wonderfully majestic West.
Yeah.
There was one person that actually was like, oh, you wanna come behind the counter?
Yes.
Take better pictures. We're like, oh, yeah, we do.
Yeah, it was great.
So, I, and, and again, they spent hours of their own time after school, during school, and to get, get this presentation going, and it was a phenomenal job, so.
Thank you.
It should be commended, though.
It should be commended. It takes guts to do what you're doing. To do the right thing is always difficult.
Can I just say, my mic's not calling up when you guys want it. I've had the opportunity to see two presentations at this point, one sitting in the audience, watching the first one in front of the council, also for the superintendent and the school committee. You guys are doing a fantastic job. This is awesome.
Thank you so much.
Really awesome job.
Does anybody else have any comment? Kim?
Kimberly Maine. Just one of the, the questions was the compliance checks and the manpower. I know that Central Falls uses the Coalition to do some of those checks.
Major McGarrett did bring that up to me. Sometimes they'll use, they gotta check into it, but sometimes they use children.
And I know my kids are so, I know that the alcohol compliance checks, Sandra Maranucci was working with the kids to get them trained to go in and do them, and I know they're always so willing, and they'd be willing to do this as well, so I just wanted to bring that.
And, yeah, that's what he had to check on. He, he talked to me out in the hallway, he just wanted to see what the legality issues are or anything like that.
Yeah.
But, again, you know, if we have people who can go in and try to purchase, and they sell, you know, that's what we do right now for alcohol, and, you know, on occasion, we do have offenders. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Question. Would, would the students go in by themselves, or would it be an adult with them?
I think that would have to do with.
That's what I don't like.
The compliance laws. I know with the alcohol compliance checks, the student goes in, the officers are outside, they try to purchase, they come back out and report to the officer. If there's a violation, then the officer then goes in and does some kind of violation.
So, they're escorted, but they're escorted with the officer outside the building, and they let them go in on their own? And I think there's a little bit of training behind that also.
There is, they have to participate.
It's not something that you say, hey, Tommy, go on in, and.
And when all these kids went into the stores to look at the tobacco, they had to go through a training as well, to be able to fill out that star's form. And it's very similar as to what that, your ordinance would look like. So they would have to be trained in what to look for, what's on the shelves, and, and how to note to, to log it.
And also, other ways of checking is, our police officers are around town, they need a soda or something, or they need to go in, you know, do a little shopping on their break or lunch. You know, you can walk in and just check that on your own very easily. So, it, it, you know, and I'm not, I'm not looking for us to tie up the police department twice a year, but again, we do our inspections once a year, and then if they, you know, they can pretty much do it on a daily basis if they want, or just by going shopping there or whatever, you know?
And I'm not sure how other towns do it, and Linda might know, but sometimes the fee is paid, pays, the fees to license also would go towards the payment of people to be able to do those checks.
The fines also?
Yeah.
Major?
Major John McGarrett, yeah. In, in the past, when we've done it with the state and the feds, that's exactly what we do. They have a training program, so our offices would train some students. They also provided funding, where they would pay the students an hourly rate, so they would get paid as well. And to answer your question, Councilman Luchardi, they would sit outside, you know, watching, so to speak, through the windows, the individual would go in, attempt to order the alcohol, see where it went from there, and then we would follow up with a fine or whatever the case may be. Be similar with the cigarettes. Again, I commend the students as well and the teachers. Obviously, the goal of any law or ordinance is compliance. So I think if we can look at the fee structure, if a portion of it can be used to help for enforcement, would be great. And as you said, as we go along, officers stopping in however they may be throughout their daily routine could also just stop in and make, so to speak, like, just a knock and check, how's everything going, make sure they're complying. But certainly something that, working on the, the ordinance with Al and, and you, whatever you guys need.
And to be honest, with those thirty-three establishments, I, I would like to have a letter sent to them, to give them a heads up, you know, maybe give them a thirty-day notice or a sixty-day notice that this has to be in compliance by February one or March one.
I believe it said sixty in your.
Yeah. But if, if we give them, we, we send them a letter, we give them a compliance, you know, I, I, I think for the most part, most stores will work with us. And some are already, I mean, look, look at CVS. CVS just got rid of all that tobacco.
That's what I'm saying. You didn't have, you don't even have an estimate of how many are not in compliance already?
Yeah. They actually kinda have in their presentation the pictures of stores that are in compliance that would not be affected, so if you want, I can give you Judy Chick's email, and you can ask her those questions, she can get those answers for you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? At this point, I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we take no action until Al redoes it, and so we're not.
Just leave it right on the agenda.
So make a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table this. Why, why table it?
Why, Al?
No, a couple of moments. Two things. Number one, I've given them my telephone number and my email address, so if they, any suggestions they have, they can contact me directly. Secondly, Dave, you've mentioned several times about the flavored tobacco, and you mentioned the, the smoking bars. The state statute says that those things do not apply to smoking bars, that they're under a whole different category, and they're not gonna let the kids in anyway, so, basically, this statute doesn't apply to the smoking.
No, we're getting into a whole new, different.
That's, well, that's, that's like the hookah bar, hookah, hookah.
Hookah, hookah.
I'm saying it right, hookah, bars.
I just wanted to let you know that it doesn't apply to any of that, that stuff. It's the store that we're talking about.
Yeah, stores in general where, and that's, and that's where they did all their research and all the local stores. And I also commend the businesses that let them go in with no hassles, and let them do their work, and which was nice of them also.
So, I wouldn't even, just don't take any action on this. You don't have to table or anything, just let it continue.
I mean, yeah, we could do that, and then it'd be on the next agenda. Got a couple of weeks, Al. I know Christmas is coming, and it's getting.
Yeah, the twentieth, I mean.
So we'll be, so we'll look at the, for first week of January, maybe?
And it is, you know, if the councilman would get back to me as to any thoughts you have, and give me the direction, and I'll, again, work with John, and if they get in touch with me, they've got the, the email, get in touch with me, I'll try to pull it all together into something that's acceptable. As I said, I just threw it out as a starting point for discussion, because it was such a large.
Oh, it is a complex ordinance, yeah. It's, it's, it has a lot of stuff in there, and it definitely, you wanna make sure it's right before we implement it. And I think you guys have done a great job starting this and giving us a foundation.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll take no action tonight, but hopefully it'll be on the January agenda. I will keep you informed, I'll keep Judy informed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appointment, interim police chief resolved at the town council hereby confirms the town manager's appointment of John F. McGarrett as interim police chief for the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? I know John has covered numerous times when Chief Silver's not here. Without a doubt, I know he can handle the, the interim role, so I, and I think Fred, that's your recommendation.
It is. I mean, he's been doing, like, as you said, he's done it several times, including when the chief, when Chief Silver was away at the FBI Training School for several months, and so he's well accustomed to the job, he does a great job, I, so I recommend his appointment.
Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, chief.
Boy, you're in for it.
Appointment for the Technology Committee, resolved at the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the Technology Committee for the town of West Warwick, with the term to expire December 31, 2018.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second. Discussion?
I'll move the name of Derek Asatrian. Derek's been on there for quite a while now, he's a great asset to that committee, and it's gonna start moving forward again now that all the stuff's going on, so I highly recommend Derek.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Is Derek here tonight?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Appointment for the juvenile hearing board, resolved at the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the juvenile hearing board for the town of West Warwick, with the term to expire December 2020.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second. Discussion?
I'll move the name of Paul Ventora. Paul's been on the juvenile hearing board for quite a few years now, and he does a good job.
I'd like to add to that. On Paul's behalf, I've had the opportunity to serve with him over about the last year and a half. He works with DCYF, has a lot of understanding of children, how they think, how they act. And he really serves a key role as the chair of the juvenile hearing board. Excuse me. Yes, of the juvenile hearing board.
All right. Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I will say this before we move on. There are openings. I know John was on the board, and I, you do have to resign.
I submitted that.
He, so, he has to resign from that board and the zoning board because he was on two boards. But the juvenile hearing board is, I know Mrs. Padula did that for many years, and then she resigned. But I've never seen vacancies on this board, but all of a sudden now we have two vacancies that we have not been able to fill, or one that we haven't been able to fill. And now we're going to have John's. So, if anybody wants to be involved with the children and helping them, it's not about punishing them, trust me. It's more about helping them and getting them through tough decisions that they made, and, you know, in all sorts of different situations on that board. But that's definitely a good board if you want to be involved with children in the town, so.
Can I just ask, how many sit on the board? Is it five?
Five.
Five.
So, I'm confused why we have openings, because when I go, all the seats are filled.
There's a couple of alternates.
There are two new people. So, are they, are they alternates?
That's the question.
I don't think we had alternates. We never had alternates for the juvenile hearing.
I was the alternate.
Were you?
I was the alternate, but my understanding.
Then you moved up?
Nope.
You were always an alternate?
Just an alternate.
Because here, here we have an upcoming appointment. So, we have to look into that board then, because if you have five, then it might not be, it might be somebody who's not supposed to be there, or, you know.
Somebody made themselves at home.
Somebody just wanted to.
We have two, two who recently came on board who are so new, I don't recall their names, but of course, Sergeant McConaughey runs it, along with Paul Ventora. Susan Banks has been on for years. She serves a key role from Tides. And then also Ginny Damasi, who is great. She knows all of the kids because of her.
Teaching.
Teaching. She subs quite a bit. But then there are two others who have been coming to the last three or four meetings.
And appear on upcoming appointments later in the agenda. It shows juvenile hearing board, one with a term to expire 12/2018. Says with term to expire twice. It actually expires 12/2016, so somebody, we just filled that one. But we want to make sure we have that board's full.
Let's find out who's on, who's sitting on that board.
All right. So, we'll just, Marion, take that notes down, take the notes and get back to us on that, please. All right. We're on discussion action.
Proposed fiscal year 2018 budget timeline sponsored by Council President Goslin.
Okay. As I recommended to all the new council members, I recommended to you, just last week, I had individual conversations with you to, actually before you were sworn in, to meet with all the department heads if you can, get a copy of the five-year plan, get a copy of all the contracts. It's a lot of reading. It's a lot of material. Any questions? You can ask me, Fred, Angelo, John, you know, we've all, we're involved in a lot of that over the past 10, 10 years. Oh, actually, the last four years. But the contracts, what, three years old now? Around, going on third year? So, take a look at all that. We're going to get into budget time. If you look at the five-year plan, last year, we took a lot and we moved a lot around. The five-year plan calls for a 4.25% increase. Was it?
Four percent.
Four percent max. That hasn't happened because we've changed things around. Sometimes we've got a lot of new growth, which helps. So, take a look at everything before we get into budget time. Now, when it comes into budget time, it, please, I, I beg you to look at the budget really close, line by line, and it's, it's broken down pretty easily now, the way John has it set up. All the healthcare and all that is in each department cost. A lot of that is contractual. So, you've got to look at that aspect of it. But a lot of the plan is already set, and we can make changes to modify, and we have in the past. So, you know, take a look at everything that I've asked you to get a copy of, and like I said, if you have any questions. Because once we get into budget time, the last thing I want to hear at the end is we go through an entire budget, and everybody seems to agree on our budget, and then three people say, I don't like the budget. You know, well, we just, we just met eight times.
Probably.
Yeah, we met eight times prior. Nobody brought up anything. Nobody says anything. Nobody talks about it. And then all of a sudden, they don't want it. You know, that's what I don't want. You know, I want you guys to really look into it, and at the end, approve our budget. You know, it's, we take a lot of time, department heads take a lot of time, energy, to produce that budget to us. And then we spend a good 16 to 20 hours here in the council chambers, going through that budget, and beating us silly over, like Angelo said, $1,000 here, $1,000 there, and moving things around. I just want to be prepared and be ready for that budget, because once February comes around, it's going to be boom quick. And then we're already into March, and we got to vote by June, April, May?
May.
May. So, you know, then it goes to the all-day referendum in May. And the last thing I want to hear is, sorry, I don't support the budget. But you, you didn't say nothing through the whole budget. You know, Jay, if you sit there in your whole budget and agree on everything, and then in the end say, I don't want the budget. Well, I don't want to be, the taxpayers need to be in hole two and let them know, hey, you know, I didn't say nothing on the budget, but I don't support the budget. You know, that's, that's all I'm saying, is please, go through the budget, get to know it, and be prepared.
But also, there's a lot of things said during the budget here, and Dave, to correct you, where you come to certain things, and certain councilmen don't want to take a stand, and it just ends at that discussion. So, it's not where, oh, yeah, I agree with the police budget. I agree with the municipal budget. I agree with the fire budget. There was a lot of discussion on where cuts could be, doing away with positions, and it was never acted on. So, at the end, I'll speak for myself. At the end, yes, I did vote against the budget, and I know I was the only one, and that was pinpointed towards me. But you know what? Like I said, you got to put your big boy pants on. You got to step up. The people are at their limits with tax increases, and I'm not going to get into it now because it's not budget season, but I'm just going to.
But Angelo, I'll use, I'll use a good example.
Sure.
The elevator in the budget, and I brought this up to Fred the other day. The elevator in the budget was $225,000. I said no way to the elevator. We, we have a working elevator. If we, if we need to, we can have people come down here. We can bring our department heads or our employees down here to help them. We cut $225,000 out of a budget. I was the only one. I was the only one. Everybody else took that $225 and put it back in the budget somewhere else. And I, and I know for a fact.
You had to, to keep the taxes down.
No, I could tell you where it went. We took $225 and put it into our wards for discretionary money. That $225 didn't have to go into our budget. So, I mean, I understand. Everybody has to put their big boy pants on. I'm not going to argue that with you. But again, if you don't say nothing in the budget, and sit here and look at it, and you...
What I like to see is the, the people who criticize every year, and I know in Ward One, we have a lot that's going to be involved this time, that they're putting their, their foot in the door and coming in to put their two cents in. That's what we want. We want criticism. We, we want our constituents coming here. We want you to say, well, yeah, we can use a 3% tax increase or a 4% tax increase, or no, we can't accept any more tax increases. So, you know, this is what we want. We sat here, and Dave will tell you, Fred will tell you. We sat here, there's nobody there. Bert, and we sat here till 11, 12 o'clock at night.
Ordering food because we were starving, because we come home from work, and we're sitting here doing a budget.
People, we represent you.
We were here till 1:00.
We're your voice, but come and be a voice at the budget time, because we're in your pockets. We work for you.
We were here till 1:00 one night, and literally we started at 6:00 PM. And there were literally, at 6:00 PM, all the department heads, a couple of employees, and maybe one or two residents. And we're talking an $82 million budget.
91.
So.
Please, tell your friends. Anybody who owns a business, anybody who owns properties, come.
But they also got to be educated on the budget and where that money's going also.
They have the right to ask where it's going.
Yep. I agree. John?
What you will see as part of the agenda package and the attached to the agenda item is a preliminary budget schedule or timeline with a lot of the items that Dave, Dave has just mentioned. Every year, what we do is we sit down, Fred and I would sit down, discuss the, discuss the potential calendar, discuss it with the council. We look at any charter requirements. Like Dave mentioned, we have to have the vote and have a budget in place while they have a referendum in May. So, this, this timeline basically takes into account the requirements, but these dates of the meetings are up to the council as far as when they're going to be set. It includes a couple of budget workshops, a couple of public hearings. Public hearings, there are two that are required, but, you know, even with the workshops, we have two scheduled, but if the council feels there should be more, you know, that's, that's a discretion of the council. So, I know this is probably the first time you've seen it. So, we will have it on the, we'll have a further discussion, or we'll have another item on next agenda. So, it'll give you a chance to take a look at the dates and come up with some of the, you know, some of the changes to the dates if in fact there are any that are discretionary.
Personally, Tuesdays work, I know Tuesdays usually worked for you, Angelo, for myself, only because I seem to set Tuesdays aside for council stuff. We have done Saturday mornings, and we've done Saturday afternoons. I will tell you.
Yeah, but we haven't done that lately.
Saturday afternoon or Saturday morning, it's one person looking at us. And it's usually the town manager and the finance director. And, you know, yeah, we get a lot done. And I, I got to say, with it being broadcasted now and people are home watching, I, I was talking to Councilman Giroux prior to the election, and too bad there wasn't a way.
They could answer back.
Well, not so much answer back, but at least send us, they, now we have the opportunity that Fred can disclose, where they can send us questions, and Fred can actually bring them before the council.
Yes. So, as, as part of the iLegislate package that we have with Granite, we can set it up so that they can real-time make comments. So, you can ask for public comments.
You can stream it through Facebook as well.
Send it across. We can, we can put it across here through this product we have right now. So, we can set that up, and people can go up and log in.
The only thing I'm wary of is, we do see it on Facebook, of the behind-the-screen warrior who wants to put whatever they want to put on there about, you know, and, and we want constructive questions. It's not.
We have the ability to determine what goes up on.
Cut the fire department right out. You know, I don't want comments like that.
Yeah, but you have the ability to, for somebody like Fred to, to screen the questions and ask the legitimate ones and not the fake profiles and the trolls and things like that.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, that, that could be an option this time around, that we can use that. So, it's something we can test.
I would, I would test that sooner than later.
Yeah. I mean.
Yeah, we can start it at regular meetings.
Yes. Angelo and I have been here since 2006. Where we've come from technology in 2006 to 2016 is just unbelievable as, as far as the stuff that you guys have brought in and showed us, so.
And on that, no good segue, because the audio system, you'll see there's a separate device on the, on the desks there. Those are the new mics that are going to be, the new audio system.
That isn't going to take three years like Councilman Giroux did.
No, no.
Right at tomorrow.
Tomorrow is the final. They've actually run some wiring.
Is that going to hold that? Because the last time somebody punched that, that thing went flying.
They're going to, they're going to mount it.
We're going to mount it. But we're going to have a new audio system.
New tape. No. A little, little, little more professional operation.
So, so that's getting, that's getting put in place tomorrow. New speakers, new mics, a control mechanism, so the audio to the streaming is stable, and it doesn't have all the peaks and valleys that it currently has. So, we were hoping that it would be installed by tonight's meeting, but unfortunately, there were some delays. But we expect that to be completed tomorrow, and for the next meeting, we'll have it. So, we won't have to worry about pressing buttons to turn on mics and whatnot. The only one that will have a control will be, you know, for the, for the audience here, not to get any back, you know, back noise. But.
Thank you.
Good segue. Thank you. But any questions, you know, as you take a look at the calendar, feel free to, you know, to reach out to, you know, Fred or myself. And we'd be looking to try to set some of these dates, you know, sometimes if, if not the next meeting, set them by January. In the meantime, Fred and I are going to start having meetings with the departments, which we have, to see what their requests are, which will be part of what's presented to you when we get to the workshops. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Town managers report.
Just a couple of updates with respect to the wind turbines. We, this month, all the town departments, school department, and wastewater facility, all received our first zero bills. So, we did, we paid negative, yeah, we still have, still have credits, quite a few credits actually. But, so there was, no electricity was, was paid for this month, so that, that's the first of many. And so, everything's running well, and, and those are all moving forward as we had hoped.
What was our average electric bill combined?
Monthly or total?
Monthly.
Combined. Well, it was about yearly, it was about between 1.3 and 1.5.
We were looking at about 150 grand a month, 200.
Easily, yeah.
Wastewater's a significant.
Yeah. So, those, those are all zero bills this month, so, which is great. So, that's...
Just think taxpayers, we can put that back off your tax rates.
Right. Next thing, related to that.
We're going to pay for that.
I want to mention, as part of the budget, that I'll be presenting recommendations for is installation of charging stations for one at the town hall and one up at the Civic Center for Electric Vehicles. And in addition to that, I like to also put on at least two vehicles, which would be inspection vehicles, which would be 100% electric. So, those be vehicles that will be, basically will be spending no money on, on fuel for, moving forward. So, the state does have a grant opportunity to help offset those costs. So, we can get $15,000 per charging station as a grant, and we can also get 7,500 per vehicle as a grant. So, I am going to put in for that, for that grant now, and then come budget season, we'll know whether or not that's on the table. So, you'll have that to make your decision by. So, but that'll just continue to move us along in the direction of all renewable. So, and again, we're the only town in the state that's 100% renewable electric, and charging stations are the next logical step. Those would be available to the public as well as part of that grant opportunity. So, we would have to make those available. And so.
How much is the installation of the charging station?
So, there are, there are two different types that we're looking at. There are different speeds, if you will, of charging. So, the conventional ones you see around usually take up to four hours to fully charge a vehicle. You have the level-one fast chargers, which can do it in about 40 minutes on a, on a drain battery. The level-one fast chargers, that's what we're recommending for the Civic Center location. Number one, because they have the necessary electric infrastructure in place to handle that. That would be approximately $26 to $30,000 equipment and installation cost. The level-two, which is what we'd probably put in here at town hall, because for inspection vehicles, it's an A-square-mile town. We could easily utilize, you know, they'd be fine on a, on a charge every day. You plug them in at night, charge it up. It's not a big deal at all. So, we're looking at, that one is more along the lines of 7,000 to 10,000.
How long does a charge last?
It, it's basically a mileage basis. So, depending on the vehicle, you know, you can get anywhere from, you know, on the low end, depending on the type of vehicle, 20 to 30 miles to, you know, 100-plus on a charge. So, it really depends on the vehicles.
And no, we're not getting Tesla police cars.
What?
And no, we're not getting Tesla police cars.
Not yet. Each station only charge one vehicle?
No, they're actually set up for two, generally speaking.
Side by side, right? Side by side.
The grant, it's $15,000 grant towards?
Per, per charging station, we can get up to $15,000, and 7,500 per vehicle with a maximum amount available to any town would be 60,000 total grant.
Okay.
So, we wouldn't go for the full 60, because I don't think we need to go for more than the two. We also thought about doing a third charging station up at the parking lot by the, by the ball field, so that if DPW wanted to get a vehicle, or if the school wanted to get a vehicle, they'd have a, a place there that they could charge. But it's, we're looking at that as a possibility. For right now, we're thinking two stations would be sufficient, to start anyway.
Thank you.
Yep. The other point I want to mention is that we, we did, as I mentioned, the previous council meeting, receive bids for the citizen request management software that we talked about. Councilman Giroux had been on board to review those. Councilman Giroux had been on board to review those proposals. Obviously, he's not here now, so I would like a council member, if anyone's interested, to assist us in that review. The next stage of the process, there are basically three proposals that our, that we received a total of four. The fourth one is out of the stratosphere cost-wise, the other three are very close and in terms of, they all approach it a little differently, so I just.
Can you explain what it's actually, so they don't.
Sure, so citizen request management, it's basically, it'll be on your phone, on your iPad, it's an app that allows any citizen, and I'd also like to see employees and the police department and anyone that's out, if they see an issue in town, whether it be trash on the street, a pothole, whether it be, you know, someone, you know, the camps we see around town sometimes with homeless, if we see any issue that requires, you know, garbage not being picked up, anything like that, they can pull up the app, they can snap a picture, it'll geo-locate the picture, they can select what the issue is and it'll immediately send emails to the department that needs to be notified about that, to myself and to the council member whose ward it is.
So my suggestion, and I know Councilman Giroux is very entailed about the coinlet for the town, and I know Jay has a little more savvy with social media than everybody here.
I don't want nothing to do with it.
So I would suggest that Jay be part of that process.
I would love to do that.
Because, and I think, because I think what you were also, if I remember correctly, Councilman Giroux was going to test that for us, and I think the amount of time that you spend on that phone.
Yeah, too much, yeah.
So I think, I would ask that Jay message.
Yeah.
Does anybody disagree?
Great, all right. So I will forward you all the three RFPs, if you can take a look at them, then we'll set up a meeting and we'll do, have live demos from the firms.
All right, awesome.
Okay, great. Next thing is the holiday party for employees and council will be on the 15th from 4:30 to 6:30, and that will be at the Arctic Playhouse, similar to what we did last year.
I already answered, I apologize, to all the commitments.
If I don't work till five, I'll probably be there a little late.
Yeah, and it'll.
The day of the week is that?
It's Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. And the final thing.
See, honey, I'm really at Dennis.
Final thing is the.
He just said to make this council meeting last past seven, because then he's gonna, you know what time he really gets out.
So the new council members received the new iPads today, we do have new ones for both Angelo and David. One thing we did want to do is we have a policy for all equipment for employees. This is completely up to you guys whether or not you want to do that, but in talking with other towns, their councils also adopt the policy so that, you know, you basically acknowledge you receive it and that there, it's just basically guidelines and recommendations for use. So it's obviously, you're the council, you run the show, but I did want to pass out a draft of a policy, we can discuss at the next meeting how you want to proceed with that. And that's all I have.
Oh, Fred, before you go, I gotta.
I'm not going anywhere, I'm ready.
No, we don't have any ward reports, so I'm gonna go on yours.
Thank you.
Wakefield Street.
Yep.
I call numerous times, I try to get that straightened out. Now, last Wednesday, my car just come out of the mechanic shop, I broke the two belts in my tires with that big rut, and I knocked my front end out, and I'm not paying for it. And I advise anybody who has damage on Wakefield Street to submit a bill to me and I'll get it to the right authorities, because they're not getting away and prostituting us like they've been. It's a mess and the winter didn't even begin yet. I've been on that road, I travel that road 15 times a day, and I get numerous complaints and I get nothing done. That is unacceptable to leave it, I understand it has to be 90 days, that's a good thing, because it gives it time to settle. But them ruts, them holes, this is happening now, and I hit a hole, it was a foot deep. I didn't think I did anything, till I got on the highway yesterday and the car was going like this. So I don't know who to submit a bill to, but they're gonna get one. And anybody else who has damage, please email me.
I didn't get a chance to talk to Angelo.
Yeah, just one quick thing, residents over in Tanglewood, I guess coming out of the Tanglewood area, down the bottom where the mirror is, I guess all the dirt from the road washes down to the bottom, so when they're stopping, they're actually sliding down into Providence Street, they were gonna, I gave them your number today, but I told them.
The only ones complaining about that were the people on the Warwick side, and they said.
This one here, this one here, I know the individual, her name's Beth Reese, she lives up at Tanglewood Apartments, and she's.
Yeah, that's very dangerous.
And she said that what happens, not the Warwick side, not that side, the Tanglewood side, when they come down the bottom of Tanglewood onto Providence Street.
Oh, I get the calls.
No, the other side too, I know that side.
I've been getting a lot of complaints on that, where they put that.
So I just wanted to give you that heads up, I know Fred's in the back, but I wanted to.
Freddie, get on that.
I told her I'd let Angelo know tonight.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions for the town manager?
So can I throw what five or?
Do the cover comment.
Normally, here's what happens, what reports I put on, what reports.
I snuck that in because the managers gotta make the calls.
On the second meeting of the month, so that'll give you the opportunity, but what, and I told Jay that today, he asked me and I said, you can, a public comment, you can bring whatever you want on.
Good.
You know, the only thing I ask, don't shock us, you know, if you have something depressing.
You can cross off all my items.
But if you have something, you know, give us a heads up so we can get, you know, at least give the department heads, the last thing you want to do is shock a department head here, if you send them an email and say, hey, what's going on with this, you can still bring it up with the council and say, please work on this, but they can also look into it and have the answers here for you that night. So, you know, the last thing you want to do is throw the grenade in the middle of the room and say, you know, hey, and then expect the answer might not happen that night, but if you give that department head or the town manager or anybody a heads up, it usually works out for you.
Yeah, they do never have any complaints, that's why I think we should all be updated again on all the private cell numbers of everyone again, because we had a list and with different department heads leaving, I'm still calling somebody from five years ago.
Mine still says Stan Pikel and it gets the bill official.
Yeah, I don't feel bad, I got the same thing. So, you know, we gotta update that so we can put on our phones and the new guys can get us, so if you've got a problem, your constituents, you call directly and DPW's great, the police department's great, whatever you need, they get right on it.
The other thing that, if you have an agenda item, Paula sends out an email asking if anybody has anything for the agenda. She would like it and only, sometimes it does get pressing matters and something might come up afterwards, but that's not her only job, is to set the agenda. So she likes everything in by Wednesday at close of business, so that way there she can work on that agenda for Wednesday, Thursday. So if you have agenda items, get them over to Paula or Mary Ann. And also, if I see something on it, because I approve the agenda, or John would if I'm not here, so if it's something, you might receive a phone call from me, just ask him, what's this about? Or you might get a call from Fred, what's this about? Just so we have an idea and so you fill us in, you know, that's just a common courtesy. Also, the other thing that, and Angelo and I, I think, just like I just told him something about in his ward, we all have friends in each other's wards and we all understand that, and, you know, you're gonna help people out, whatever, just try to keep that councilman in the loop so they know what's going on, you know, you know, just like the sand thing, you know, Beth messaged me today about it, I want to let Angelo know that's going on so he can work on it. So we all can make each other successful.
What I always do, when they call me, I tell them, you know, call Goslin or call whoever, whoever's ward it is, and if you don't get nowhere with it, then we'll do something. Give them the decency to act on it.
And just keep them in the loop, it might be something you could fix right away, just let them know, you know, just courtesy.
Finance update.
Just wanted to mention one thing quickly that kind of touches on what Fred mentioned about the grant for the charger program. We did, or we're actually working on a second application with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank to do some additional building efficiency measures. Last round, we actually focused on the DPW and the Civic Center as well as financing for one of the wind turbines. So the second round, what we're looking to do is potentially seek financing, permanent financing for another wind turbine, but also focus on some efficiency measures that can be done within this building as well, or this complex, I should say, both police fire and town hall, as well as the fire stations. We're looking for, we've actually had a level one, what they refer to as a level one energy audit completed to get some potential measures that could potentially save some money. And what we do now is look at what the savings would be versus the cost, and then based on that percentage of savings, then we can actually petition or apply to the Infrastructure Bank to get some long-term financing to actually make those, or take those measures, do the improvements. And the thought behind it is that the cost savings that you would achieve each year would actually go towards the debt service or the debt payments that have to be done to the Infrastructure Bank. So, you know, we were very well, we did very well with the first round, we were able to take care of the Civic Center, both buildings as well as DPW, and we look forward to trying to see what we can potentially do in this building as well as some of the fire stations.
Okay, any questions for John? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Upcoming appointments, juvenile hearing board, one with a term to expire 12/2018, one with a term to expire 12/2016. Recreation committee member, one ward three, planning board, one five-year term zoning board of review, one five-year term technology committee, one ward one with term to expire 12/516, one ward two with term to expire 12/3116, one ward three with a term to expire 12/3116, one ward five with a term to expire 12/3118.
I think on that, technology, I think I just appointed, my pick was Derek.
Yeah.
A Satrion, so that can be, that's one, that's the appointment.
Yep, that's Ward One. Also, with these, with some of these appointments, just so the rest of the new council knows, that we usually advertise them three times for the meetings. So if a position comes open, say John left his position, we normally advertise that for three meetings, so that's six weeks. And, you know, if you have anybody who wants to serve on these boards, you know, tell them the process, the processes, come into town hall, fill out the paperwork, and we'll go from there. And, you know, then when it comes time, if there's more than one name, it now becomes a selling point, you know, we look at resumes, we look at everything and. Some of these have been open for a while, with the recreation committee in Ward Three has been open for a while, right? Recreation committee has been open a while, but I'll be honest, Jay and I were both on that recreation committee. I represented the council, and we haven't met since Ray Beatty's been gone, and even before that.
It's been a while.
It's been a little while, but.
It's been about a year.
Yeah, because we talked about the skate park, that was the last thing, yeah.
When you're replacing in my ward in Ward Four.
Yeah.
So I'm chair.
You guys gotta get that going, because you get a lot of complaints that you guys don't meet.
We should meet, we should meet, I'm thinking once a month.
Yeah, well, we have to get somebody who's gonna run it again.
Right.
You know, because Ray did that as Poxx and Rec, right now, Poxx and Rec is over in the DPW side, correct? So we gotta figure that out.
You get someone that's running Poxx and Rec now, whoever it may be.
Yeah.
Let me, let them be there once a month where you can bring up your concerns or whatever.
If we did know somebody or we were trying to get the word out, where are the applications, where are they posted? Clerk's office. Are they posted, no, but you said you advertised them somewhere? They're advertised every council meeting, just like, this is considered advertising. Okay, okay. So every council meeting, they're advertised, they come into the clerk's office and they can fill out the paperwork right there.
Dave, I know you and Angelo are probably sick of hearing me, but number one, I think the zoning board is incorrect. I don't think we have a five-year term coming up.
No, we don't.
We just replaced Patricia. We do have two alternates, one from each major party, and I'm begging you, because to sit here with a roomful.
Well, we actually, with John having to resign, we did have, we did have a Democrat who did put in for it last time, Justin Kootu, I did speak to him over the weekend, he's still interested, and so.
We need a Republican, but the problem, the problems I spelled out in the email is that state law, that right now, if we have two people absent, we gotta look out at a roomful of people and saying, we can't even continue it. Applicant, you gotta re-advertise, you gotta re-notice and come back someday in the future, so, you know, I really. And then the expense that they pay to send all the letters. As I put in your email, just using as an example, if it happens to be within 200 feet of a piece of property on River Farm, it requires them to notice every resident of River Farm, even though nobody's involved, just it's a piece of land. And you think of what that costs and it's re-return you see requested. So it's just, I, you know, I know I'm a broken record on this, but when I'm sitting up there with the zoning board and having to tell people, sorry, we can't do anything because we got a sick zoning board number, it's tough.
Al, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the alternates need to be of a party affiliation or?
Unaffiliated.
Couldn't it be unaffiliated?
No, no.
It can't?
Under alternate?
No. The charter says that the five members can have no more than three from any one political party. The alternates must be one from each of the two major, from each, one from each major party, so that means you gotta have a Republican and a Democrat.
So you need one of each.
One of each, you can't, I don't know whether the council could stretch an independent to be a major political party. I don't think so.
25 years ago, they got trouble.
Yeah. So I know there's an applicant that's a Democrat, so we need one, a Republican, because you moved Alan Hurric up, so I don't think. And again, you know, you have, to me, you have three major boards in this town, the three most important boards, and whether you disagree with me or not, crucial boards is the pension board, the planning board, and the zoning board.
Pension and planning are full.
Planning, they, you need.
This says, is it some?
People who are experienced.
That might be somebody expiring.
Experienced, that know not just someone, oh, that's my cousin, I think I'll have input on there. You need someone that's, that's the future, I sat on the planning board for eight years. I know, you need someone that knows properties, you know, somebody that needs about building, you just can't be putting in, and people say to me, how come I wasn't picked for that board? Well, you're not qualified, I mean, you know, you put your name in, that doesn't mean you're qualified to do, to fill in that position, because this is the future for the town. I mean, them three boards right there, every other one you can learn, them three are real tough.
Well, that's the one thing about the alternate too, is they get to learn.
But he needs some kind of.
Yeah, they need some kind of background.
As an alternate, let me just say that, you know, Al was a great tutor. I think you need someone who's willing to learn, someone who's willing to.
Well, you need someone with experience.
Well, if they have some type of experience, it's certainly better, I mean, but somebody who's really willing, I should probably add to the experience, somebody who's willing to learn, who's willing to look at the different zoning laws and pay attention to what needs to be paid attention to.
To follow up on something Angelo just pointed out about experience, the importance of it, initially, when I came on with the zoning board, particularly with the zoning board, where appeals go to the Superior Court, if we had something of, somebody wanted a two-foot variance to put in a swimming pool and there was nobody here objecting, I just prepared a very stock report. The Superior Court now has been getting very different, very tough on it, that if an appeal goes up to the Superior Court and the zoning board doesn't have the factual findings as to why they didn't grant it or they did grant it, in their report, not only is the Superior Court sending it back, but they're imposing sanctions on the zoning board. So the reports that now that Mark makes for the planning board and that I make for the zoning decisions are quite detailed, and we have to have members on those boards who are able to say, you know, it's not gonna grant this, because I live in that area and I know that the traffic is too heavy and that the traffic report says this, but I've been there and I've seen the accidents, give the facts as to why they're making the decision. So it's very important, and, you know, I, again, I know I'm a broken record on this, but I'm the one sitting there with the people all wondering why they can't be heard. Thank you.
And I would just add too, that Grow Smart Rhode Island provides training courses for zoning, planning board members, and town council members, by the way, because the town council is the deciding board when it comes to zone changes and the approval of planning policy and regulations, so it's something that wouldn't be a bad idea here either, but in any of their training, there's a price for their trainings, but they, the trust will cover those costs, because they want to make sure that our boards are, as Angelo said, qualified, they know what they're doing, they know how to read plans, they know all those things, and the courses that Grow Smart does are excellent. They walk you through development projects, they, you know, you sit there, you have engineers there, you have planners there, and they show you how to do it all, and it's really And it's really something that's very valuable. And again, again, it's, 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 the price is covered and they do them all through the year.
Fred, you said, you just brought up a point and Al's gonna appreciate this and I'm not gonna mention the member's name.
I know.
And we're at a zoning board meeting and he been on there about 10 years and he was reading the plans and they were backwards. And, no, Al, you remember?
Rest his soul, cut it out.
And, and one thing to follow, I've take, I've taken all of those Grow Smart courses and in addition, just so the council's aware, periodically, they put, uh, a lawyer by the name of Chase puts out a handbook that is called Zoning for Non-Lawyers. And it's gonna be revised the beginning of January and I've already spoken with Elaine so that we will have those for all the zoning board members. And I submit, when a new member comes on, a handbook, uh, that I know John received, uh, trying to, trying to bring them up to date on it. So it just, as, as Angelo said, I think those two boards are very important and we got good boards and I don't want to see them slide.
You'll work on it.
Thank you.
And one of the things that you could do as a council, as you're appointing members, is just ask them, when they, when they apply, are they willing to go to these trainings? Because it is very important. It's not something we can force anybody to do. But it's, uh, it's something that would be very helpful.
Are they one-day trainings?
Yeah, they're generally, they're generally...
Are they multiple days workshops?
Yeah, they're generally in the evening and they're like three hours.
Okay.
And they'll feed you.
Along with meetings, I just want to give the new council members a heads up, usually in January, I think it is this January, I just, Solicitor Williams and I were just talking, open government meeting, um, they usually have that once a year for any new elected officials, even if you're, even if you've been around, get a refresher. Um, it basically goes over everything, laws, things you need to follow, Robinson rules, the whole line.
Yeah, but they, they do that in the mornings, people can't take it anymore.
No, I, I understand, but if, if, if you can take it and if you can get to the class, it, it will be in January, if you can take a day out of work, it isn't...
You just sent that.
I sent it today.
You did send it today?
Yeah, nine o'clock in the morning.
January ninth.
I mean, you know, you can't, people are in business.
So, I haven't had a chance to look at my email.
They can't close down businesses to go, go do a hearing.
Um, just, if you get opportunity, you know the day is, January 9th, if you can, if you can maybe request a day off for 9:00 AM.
It's like 32, about noon, and it's at CCRI this year, not at Roger Williams.
Closer by.
Yeah.
January 9th.
Yeah. I sent it to your email.
So, we're on public comment, council first. Do you have any? I, I have, I have five or six things, so I should let other people go. Go ahead, Jay.
In, in Ward Four, we...
Put your mic on.
Sorry. In Ward Four, we have a new business in town. Uh, it's currently open, it's, uh, Neighbor's Emergency Center, it's right, right on Quaker Lane, right near the KFC. It's a 24-hour emergency room, it's not an urgent care. Um, I've been there, it's brand new, so it's beautiful. But, uh, um, it's, it's great for the town and I'm pleased it's in Ward Four. So if, if you're sick, then go check it out.
Hopefully, hopefully not.
Jay, do you have anything?
Yeah, I want to, uh, bring up how awesome the, uh, the Arctic Tree Lighting was this year. I know it's Ward Three, but it's really an entire town-wide thing. I want to, Tabak's and the audience over there, I know they were hugely responsible and for everybody that, uh, put that thing together, it was pretty awesome this year. We had probably one of the biggest crowds, obviously we don't have anybody keeping track, but it looked like one of the biggest crowds we've seen, so.
Angelo?
Yeah, um, I just want to bring up something about, uh, Kent County Times, uh, reporter, uh, she gave me a bad news a couple days ago. She is no longer working with the Times. Um, what I'm urging everyone to do, uh, is write a letter to the editor and, um, try and get some results back. Kendra works with the council, unbelievable, you call her, I don't care what, I call her at 11 o'clock at night when something comes on my mind, she answers it or she calls you back. And every one of us that had dealings with her in the past six years, um, it's just, you know, you get used to these reporters and they do a good job for the community. So, anybody, Jay, you know, your friends, make them make some calls or, I already, uh, put my two cents in with the editor, I haven't gotten a response yet. Uh, I emailed the council and the editor all at once. I mean, you know, what can I say? Anybody that knows Kendra, and Kendra, believe me, it was a pleasure working with you and I know you're feeling bad and you got us feeling bad and, uh, you don't go unnoticed, believe me. So, again, you know, let's show some compassion to Kendra, always put the kids, uh, anytime you called her, the Boy Scouts Matthew, for years. I mean, Kendra was always there on Saturdays, Sundays. We're not gonna get another reporter like that and this is our town and our community. And I would just appreciate everyone just putting their two cents in and putting a word in for Kendra, that's all.
And I know, Angelo, you kind of put her on the spot and, you know, it's kind of tough for her to sit here. But, um, Kendra has always been a good reporter to us, to the town, um, and I'll, I want to keep it, you, you hit everything on the head, but not only that, you know, she's treated my family as family, she's walked up, you know, and has gotten to know the people in this community. So whatever her endeavor is, I wish her the best of luck and, um, hopefully, um, we'll still be friends and we can still hang out. So, thank you for all you've done over the past six, six or eight years with us, so thank you for everything. Um, I have many different things here, but I'm gonna go start with the easy ones. Yesterday, I was able to attend a meeting with the town manager and, uh, Steve Lawton with the Secretary of Education, King, um, and the Governor, uh, and also Senator Reed. I was more impressed with the four students that they had show up than actually the Governor or anybody else being there. Um, I got to hear stories of what these kids are doing in computer science. One, I already knew, because he's my neighbor, and I already knew about his endeavor with computer science. And the other three kids also, what they're learning and, um, just listening to them taught me a few things. But to listen to one of the students, his name is, uh, Austin Laramie, and he was talking about how he's working with Stanford University when he came in as a freshman, to take all our old laptops, put them in a room, combine them, I know he came over to me, I helped him create the crossover cables. Um, so I was actually picking on him, I said, listen, when you become the millionaire, don't forget who made you the crossover cables. But to listen to what he was doing with our laptops that were stocked in a closet, is basically taking them and finding a cure for cancer. Each laptop has its own DNA and it's feeding down and it's actually working with Stanford University, he took the idea out of there, he's doing it right here at West Warwick High School, where they can actually take your blood and tell you by what these computers are doing, um, when, if you're a high candidate for cancer, when you could possibly get cancer, when you should start your testing for cancer. Just listening to what he was saying, and I looked over in the Governor's eyes and Senator Reed and I think he stumped them. They, they were dumbfounded by what he was saying. It was very articulate, very professional, the way he was speaking. And, and I'm looking and I'm saying, wow, this is a West Warwick student, he started this as a freshman year, he's still involved his junior year. Also, um, they brought up numerous things about what types of children are involved in computer science. And also, that computer science, also five, six years ago, was one of the cuts they wanted to talk about cutting here in West Warwick. And only to see that Secretary King comes in, on a national level, who reports to Obama and is coming to West Warwick. That was the utmost, nicest thing I've seen in that school department in a long time. I'm not saying that they don't do anything nice, but personally seeing up there, involved in, in that meeting. So, you know, if anybody can see what's going on and, and talk to some of these kids, you'd be very impressed. So, again, that was a pleasure to be there yesterday and I, and I think Fred, you saw, I know I tapped Steve Lawton when Austin started speaking, I said, I know what his story is, wait till you hear this. And Steve looked at me and said, wow, you know. And, and again, that's, that's what our kids are learning up there at the school, so excellent job up there. Skate park, I think 99% of the equipment has been installed and is in full use. All the centerpieces are in, so I think we're able to use that now.
Some jockeying, because of the spacing issues.
The spacing.
They're gonna, they're gonna work on those in the next, uh, week or so and then they're gonna, once everybody's happy with where they're at, they're gonna bolt them down.
Bolt them down.
Because right now, it's just, uh...
And they got kids trying the stuff out down there. I know, uh, the kid I used to coach and I'm still, I still see around every once in a while, Logan Chapman, he's always down there riding his bike and I pretended it was me, I use him as a stunt double. So, um, asphalt plants are closing December 16th. I found that out today, because they were doing asphalt down near my house, I was talking to, uh, Rick Nunes and he said, you know, he brought up when the roads are gonna get done, because they, he was told today the asphalt plants are gonna close the 16th. So if we can make sure we stay on top of Cardi, I know Freddie's been on top of them, but they've been hesitant, I know it's been raining, but we only got a week and a half left. Um, dog licenses, there's been an influx of people saying they didn't get their renewal notice. Mary Ann, can we just make sure next year around March that we didn't skip anybody? Because that's, I think that's probably what happened, was we missed a batch of people or how that report's run, I don't know. But there, it seems like, and my own father had somebody knock at his door, unfortunately his dog died, so he wasn't renewing anyway. But, um, but he said he never got the renewal, he always walks in here to renew his do, dog license, I know he does. So if we could just make sure we stay on top of that. And the last thing, I know Jay brought up the Arctic Tree Lighting, but the Phoenix Tree Lighting was also on Thanksgiving night. We got to unveil the new bench from the old tree. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go down there, um, I think John did a U-turn when he got down there and saw it. But it's been polyurethaned with one good coat to get us through the winter, will take care of another good coat in the spring. But, uh, that bench has been unveiled, it's actually in the memory of Frankie Horder Jr. So if I, on your way down during the day or whatever, take a look at it, sit on it, take a picture with it, it's got two big Santa Claus arms and two big trees on each end. I can't even, Damon's tree carving out of Situate did such a phenomenal job there. And he just showed up at the tree lighting, he, I didn't ask him to, and when we unveiled it, everybody was like so happy and impressed with what it looked like. And I just tapped the kid on the shoulder and I said, so how do you feel? He goes, this is why I do this. And, you know, so, but that, that's gonna be there full-time down there, it's not gonna be removed. Um, hopefully, nobody decides to carve their name in it or do whatever they want to do.
Why you gotta give them ideas?
This camera's down there, so there is a camera on site, so hopefully, you know, they don't do it. I don't have to give them ideas, they're, they're pretty well in their role. But, again, I just hope it doesn't happen. But again, now it's polyurethaned, if anything does happen, he, like you said, it's wood, it can be sanded, it can be fixed. So, but take a look at it, it's very impressive.
Some really good photos on, Chris Gauthier has the page, West Warwick Photos, there's some really good ones of it.
And John, I'm sorry, I skipped you because you were...
It's okay, save the best for last. So, if you survive your injuries, your illness, at Councilman Lichardi's Stack Care, I would ask that on the way home, you go via Coesit and you stop at Ku's Restaurant. Uh, Yan Ku is the owner, it's the former Jack's Panan. Um, fantastic food, um, I think it's gonna be one of our upcoming restaurants, it's taken a little while to catch on, I think people are stopping and they're enjoying the food. Your traditional Chinese fanfare, but also Malaysian food, um, which is really interesting. I've been, uh, there probably two or three times already and, uh, Yan is more than willing to let people try and sample different things. Um, we also have Fresco that will be opening shortly on Coesit, so we're looking forward to that. That's at the old, um, Aquilanti's location. Um, on a more serious note, I have been looking at the gate that's on Legion Way, um, I've talked to the fire chief about this. Uh, Legion Way, um, connects with Drubridge Drive in the Nottingham section. Uh, years ago, that gate was closed off. And it is an access point for emergency vehicles and it's overgrown, um, so I would hope that possibly DPW can get out there and they can clean that out and at least make it accessible should there be some type of emergency, um, they can get in and out. Um, I think there's some rocks or something that might be in the way.
There's been some hot burn over that entranceway for years.
Yeah, you know, and that's something that I'm, I'm looking at, I want to, um, learn a little bit more about the history, uh, but I am pursuing that. But ultimately, I do want it cleaned and, um, you know, there's an, there's an old lock on there, I guess we could change the lock, the chief said it wouldn't make a difference, they could cut it off anyway. But, uh, they would have a hard time getting through because of, uh, the things that are currently there.
And just to, just to let you know, that piece of land is East Greenwich.
It is.
So if we're in there cleaning, it could be an issue, so we might have to reach out to East Greenwich.
Okay. Um, I think that's how, all I want to talk about for now.
All right. Public comment, Stan.